Good evening and welcome to the Village of Westmont official voting board meeting for October 5th, 2009. At this time, I'd like to ask our clerk to please take the roll call.
Mayor Ron?
Here.
The clerk's here. Trustee Emery?
Here.
Trustee Fleming?
Here.
Trustee Forsley?
Here.
Trustee Klebeneau?
Here.
Trustee Scott?
Here.
Trustee Seneca?
Here.
Manager Searle?
Here.
Attorney Zeminek?
Here.
And for the last time, Acting Police Chief and soon-to-be Police Chief Mulhern?
Here.
Deputy Police Chief King?
Here.
Fire Chief Trout?
Here.
Public Works Supervisor of Engineering Noriega?
Here.
Deputy Fire Chief Wise?
Here.
Economic Development Director Kimball?
Here.
Public Works Director May?
Here.
Human Resource Administrator Casey?
Here.
Illinois State Representative Belloc?
Here.
Okay, thank you.
Wait, I'm not done.[65.56][65.56](Laughter). Water Department Supervisor Ramsey?
Here.
Public Works Supervisor Facility and Safety Cherny?
Here.
Police and Fire Commissioner Cavanda?
Here.
Police and Fire Commissioner Musial?
Here.
Police and Fire Commissioner Horrinsick?
Here.
Okay.[89.11][89.11](Laughter).
You might say, "All the big wigs are here tonight."
And a cast of thousands.
Cast of thousands. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First item on our agenda before us this evening are the minutes of the committee. The whole meeting held September 17th and board meeting held September 21st, 2009.
Motion to approve is corrected.
Second?
Discussion? Roll call.
Trustee Klebeneau?
Yes.
Trustee Seneca?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
Trustee Forsley?
Yes.
Trustee Emery?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Moving along, reports. First is the presentation of the IMAP and Safety Committee awards. IMAP being the Intergovernmental Management Assessment Program and Irma being the Intergovernmental Risk Management Agency. And to give a little background on this before we give out the awards, I would like to ask our village manager, Ron Searle, to give us a little history on, background on these awards. Ron?
Thank you, Mayor. Irma, which is the Intergovernmental Risk Management Agency, our loss control self-insurance pool that we belong to since, I think, about 1979, has a program in which they essentially, I liken it to the police accreditation and the fire accreditation program. They design a set of criteria that you have to meet to try to make sure you're conducting business in a safe and a risk-free manner. And one of the things that we've excelled at for a number of years is complying with those requirements. And back in 2007, we had a similar presentation. We had a number of the same people that are going to be recognized here tonight, here then. Purpose of the recognition is they, every two years, come in and evaluate how well you're doing with that program. And back in 2007, we scored a 93% out of 100%, which was one of the highest scores for this IMAP program at that time. Because we scored so high, we were able to participate in what they call a self-evaluation of the IMAP program, which is what we did this year. And we ended up surpassing that score with a 97%. So we wanted to recognize particularly some of the individuals that are actively involved in the effort. Mike Cherny, who is our Public Works Supervisor for Facilities and Safety, is very, very active in our safety program and our loss control program. And he has worked for a number of years now with our Executive Safety Committee. So we have those individuals. We have department heads and some of the other individual members of the various departments that have been actively involved in the program. We'd like to recognize their effort because this is a big deal. This does, it's hard to quantify, but this does save the taxpayers a lot of money when we follow these guidelines. And it's something we take very seriously and we like to recognize the people that really make that program happen. It's these people and all of our employees ultimately, but the mayor has some certificates he'd like to pass out and recognize some individuals.
And we have to start by recognizing you for all the efforts that you've completed to put all this forth and working with all of the staff to save all of us here in the village a lot of money.
Thank you.
And have a lot of safety, a wonderful safety record as well, and all the staff that have helped to do that. With that being said, what I'd like to do is mention the names and have your names mentioned to come forward. And I have the names of those that I think are here this evening, those that are not able to attend, and there were several that were, did not respond. And I would like to mention those names as well. So let me start with Kathy Casey, wherever she is. Kathy, please. And we have Mike Cherny. Nice t-shirt. I should say, nice t-shirt, nice shirt. And Randy King. Tom Mulhern. That name sounds awfully familiar.[423.22][423.22](Laughter). Noriel Nor, Noriega. Remember the last time I saw him in a shirt and tie?[436.12][436.12](Laughter).
Probably two years ago.
Steve Penzak. Steve here.
I'm Steve.
Okay. You were listening so closely, you missed your name. Congratulations. Mike Ramsey. David Weiss.
Chief.
And the list of those not attending, if any of them are here, please come forward. Lori Brady, Melissa Brendel, Claire Gibbs, Rose Gross, and Craig Scala. And the last three were Mike Dale, Patty, Myl Karski, and Lisa Van Bocken.
Mike Dale's here. Mike's here.
Okay.[540.88][540.88](Laughter). Let's see how you're going to take a picture and be in it at the same time.
(Inaudible).
Yeah, right.[547.16][547.16](Laughter). Very good, Mark. Very good. Okay. Did Joanna do a?
We do a group shot, yeah.
Okay, now we can.
We box.[556.16][556.16](Applause).
Get in that one.
What an outstanding, professional group we have before us here.
Ladies and gentlemen, congratulations. So did you want roles or did you want?
No, try to tighten this a little bit.
Suck it in.
Okay. Everyone here? One, two, three.
Very nice.
It's very good work.
of our Acting Police Chief, Tom Mulhern, as Police Chief Tom Mulhern. Would you please step forward? We have also invited Patty Belloc, our representative, who's here with us this evening, to attend this swearing-in ceremony. And also our Senator Kirk Dillard, who is not able to be with us this evening. But we thought it was such a special presentation that we wanted to get as many dignitaries here as we could for this swearing-in time. So with the clerk, myself, and Patty Belloc, we'll all...
We're going to make sure you're sworn in.[673.51][673.51](Laughter). Where's your hat?
If you try to, if you try to escape, you're going to be in big trouble.
We'll face, we'll face time.
I state your name.
I, Thomas Mulhern.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The laws of DuPage County.
The laws of DuPage County.
The Westmont Village Code of Ordinances.
The Westmont Village Code of Ordinances.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
That I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of office of Police Chief of the Village of Westmont.
Duties of the office of Police Chief of the Village of Westmont.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my abilities.
Congratulations.
Thank you.[727.88][727.88](Applause).
Tom told me this afternoon that he's only going to speak for one minute, but we know that's not going to be the case, so please, Tom, take it away.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say thank you to Ron Searle, Mayor Ron, and the Village Board for your trust and confidence in selecting me to be your next Chief of Police. I thank you for your support that you've shown me over the years and your guidance, and I look forward to working closely with you and continuing with that support and guidance in our future. I also wanted to thank my wife, Joanne, and my daughter Kelly for their understanding, for all the times that I couldn't be home when they wanted me there. They understand and they've been a very huge support system for me as well. I wanted to thank my mom and dad who are here and my family and my friends, a lot of them, as you can see, for their love, their support, and their advice over the years. To the men and women of the Westmont Police Department, I look forward to working with you in the future. We have an outstanding group of dedicated and professional people who make our department one of the best departments in the Chicagoland area. Together, we will continue to our high level of service, our commitment, and professionalism to our citizens and our business people. I am proud to have been selected and to serve as your Chief of Police. I would ask that we all take time to remember our officers while they perform their duties, while we are safe in our offices, our schools, and our homes at night. They are out there 24 hours a day, seven days a week, doing their duty so we can be safe. And they offer us assistance when necessary and they keep us well protected. I ask that you think of them as they are the ones that are out there putting their lines on the line and to keep all of us safe, myself included. I wanted to thank the businesses, the community, and my volunteer, our volunteers and our residents who have supported our department and myself on a daily basis and help us make our department what it is today. I look forward to serving as your Chief of Police, and I remain committed to keeping Westmont a safe community within which to work, live, and raise a family. Thank you.[860.98][860.98](Applause). Okay.[862.98][862.98](Laughter). Thank you. Following today after the meeting, board the meeting, everyone is welcome, invited. Please come back to the Westmont Police Station upstairs in the training facility. We have cake and coffee. The cake is store-bought, so it's safe to eat, and I didn't make the coffee, so it's fine to drink the coffee. Everyone's invited, please to come back. And again, thank you, everyone, for your support.
Thank you very much.[886.44][886.44](Applause).
Bill, don't they like pin the star on them? Sorry. They don't pin the star on them?
He's got the...
What happened? He said Kelly was going to pin it.
He said Kelly was going to pin the star.
I think he forgot.
Yeah. Wait, he didn't...
He'll do it later, will he?
Oh, okay. We kind of missed it.
Who gets it?
Oh, he got too excited, forgot about it.
I pinned it on, but I don't have it.
He's got it in his pocket.
There's a lot of people out there.
The meeting is the third.
Wait, can we clear a room?
Can't really. Hey.
No.
Yeah. I don't know.
He's got it.
Yeah.
Oh, he has it.
We forgot that part. You want to?
Yeah. Got to pin that.
That's what we were just saying.
I think you better do...
We got a photographer?
Where was that? Where was that hiding? Where was that hiding?
Mike.
Bill.
I didn't, I'm sorry, I didn't, nobody said anything to me.
April 4th.
Let's wait till, don't let her leave.
Is he doing?
He's going to do it before the meeting's over?
As is standard procedure, if I could have your attention again, please. It's appropriate for the wife or significant other to put the new star on the police chief after he's sworn in, and we neglected to do that. So at this time, I would like to ask Tom's wife, Joanne, to come up.
And Kelly.
And their daughter Kelly to jointly put the new star on Tom.
We have to delegate it to Kelly, so.
Okay.[1009.13][1009.13](Laughter).
Hold on one second, here comes the paparazzi.
The paparazzi.
Very good.[1013.13][1013.13](Applause). Tom's daughter, Kelly, had the star, that's why we didn't, we didn't know about it. Sorry, Tom.
That's okay.
Thank you. Moving right along, that's all that I have. Our village clerk, please.
I just want to remind everybody that tomorrow night, Tuesday, October 6th, is the open house for the Fire Department at the South Station, and it is from 6:30 to 8:30. And then the silent parade on Friday night, October 10th, which usually comes by on Naperville Road up between 7:00 and 7:10, I'd say. So be there with your flashlights. And then is the Maze Lake Bazaar this weekend?
Yes, I thought so.
And the Maze Lake Bazaar will be Saturday and Sunday at Maze Lake Village, so everybody go out and enjoy that. So those are the items I have for tonight.
Thank you. Our village attorney, John Zeminek.
Nothing to report. Thank you, Mayor.
Ron Searle.
Thank you. I just would like to congratulate Tom. I know he's going to do an exceptional job as our next Police Chief. And I just wanted to announce a couple of other events that are coming up this Friday. We've got our electronics recycling event for this month. That'll be on the 9th from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. in the afternoon at the Ty Warner Overflow Parking Area. And also wanted to announce that our next Census 2010 Complete Count Committee meeting is going to be on the 22nd at 7:00 p.m. And then the only other thing I had was I was going to ask Fred Kimball, he wanted to make some comments about another meeting, if you could come to the podium. Thanks.
Fred, they're closing the door. Everyone is filed out. Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you, Your Honor. Staff would like to confirm with the Village Board this evening, we've had a great deal of difficulty in trying to juggle the schedules of the Village Board and the Planning and Zoning Commission to arrange a meeting to, a special joint meeting, to discuss the current 1998 comprehensive plan and go through a very extensive review process on that document. And we're wondering, the mayor is available, Chairman Richard is available on Monday, November the 9th at 7:00 p.m. So we thought that would be enough advance notice for everyone to clear their schedules. And we would like to ask the members of the Village Board and the Planning and Zoning Commissioners who attend that evening to please bring your personal calendars so that at the conclusion of that meeting, we can set the date for the following meeting, as we expect that there will be several meetings involved in this rather thorough review process. Very important procedure for us to begin reviewing that comprehensive plan to lay the groundwork for its revision in the near future.
And what time are you starting?
7:00 p.m. here in Village Hall. We are making arrangements. We did have, the only conflict was a potential conflict with the peer review, peer jury program, but by giving them well in excess of 30 days' advance notice, they are able to reschedule so that the Village Hall chambers will be available to us for that process.
Go ahead.
Thank you.
Anything else? Ron?
Oh, that's it.
Thank you. First item, downtown employee parking permits. Board to consider Nornet's creating parking permits for downtown employees at a cost of $25 per quarter to identify designated parking areas where said permits are valid. So move. Second. Discussion?
Yes. I do have a couple of questions to make sure it's clarified. The first 15 spots are going to be paid for by 25, but we said that further down, they're going to be free. Is that correct? Further down Burlington, they'll be free? They can park anytime?
Beyond the commuter?
Beyond the class, beyond the B permitted area?
I think so.
Okay, the problem is beyond the permitted area are meters. They go from B to meters, so they're still not free. That's why I'm trying to figure out where these employees are going to park who want to be off-cas but don't want to pay.
Recognizing what you're asking about, I was talking about the fact that in the A lot here, we permit anybody to park in the A lot without an A commuter parking permit after a certain time. So when we were talking about, we weren't talking about beyond the B lot, we were talking about beyond the part of B that's being used. There's a lot of B parking spaces that are unoccupied. And an alternative was to allow unlimited parking in the B permitted area after, is it 9:30? 9:30 would be, you know, a goal because all the commuters would be here, and then why not use the rest of the parking for free? So it'd be in between the last-used space and where the metered parking starts.
Okay.
That was just an idea.
But for an employee who has to work before 9:30?
That would not be a reasonable alternative.
That wouldn't be acceptable, yeah.
I think Trustee Scott was the one who suggested that maybe go beyond that metered parking and, you know, allow free parking.
Well, the meters go all the way down to the end. We metered all the way to the last parking spot from what I could see today when I drove by. It's solid meters from B all the way to the end of Westmont. And we just put those meters in that too long ago. I think they're fairly worn.
Replaced them, yes.
Yeah, so...
Well, what you could do is you could, I guess, allow the parking there with the pass. Well, that wouldn't work. You'd have to issue a sub-pass.
I don't know. In other words, like four or five cars in the metered parking. I was surprised, there are people who, you know, who go all the way down. Now, those people, if they know they can go into B at 9:30, are not going to bother unless, of course, unless they go catch the train, obviously, at 7:00 or something, but...
Right, the metered parking, they typically pay for 12 hours between the commute and the working day. So the idea was, was to allow unlimited parking in the B zone itself, any available space in the B zone after a certain time. So the B commuter pass would only be necessary until 9:30 in the morning.
Well, you may have more than 15 employees that, you know, the 15 spots might be taken up, and the other people are going to have to go down and be someplace.
Right. That's why there were multiple locations identified as usable. They're not restricted to those 15 spaces. It's those spaces, the ones on Quincy, East Burlington, all those alternatives are available for them to go circulate and find any one that they prefer.
17 spaces directly across the street from Village Hall in addition.
After 9:30?
No. Even before 9:30.
And are those going to be sold? They're going to be sold, aren't they?
Those are going to be employee downtown passes.
Right, for $25.
Yes, per quarter.
But I'm looking for the ones who cannot afford the 25, who need a place to park, and they might start at 7, 8, 9 o'clock. Where are they going to park?
Well, that's the difficulty. They'll have to, I mean, it's actually no different than it exists today.
They'll have to move maybe from somewhere.
They have, they can find a four-hour spot and move it in four hours.
Isn't that conducive to the employees for downtown, though?
No, I mean, that's currently how it is today. The timed parking is timed parking, and then it's just the level of enforcement that's going on right now. You can't get aggressive on enforcement until there's a solution for the alternatives.
We could have a fourth color of permit, and that's the free ones. So they can park in, you know, past a certain point, past B. If, like, the pink ones are going to be the $25 ones, we've already got blue and yellow for commuters. We have green ones, and the green ones can park far down because those are the free ones.
And they can be there at 7:00 in the morning or whatever time they have to be and not worry about it.
And if they go into a metered spot, they go into a metered spot.
Might have an employee that's maybe the only person in the shop. They have to close their store to go down there to move and try to find a place. So I like Ellen's idea with the fourth color. It solves the issue.
The other question I have is, on the ordinance, it says parking downtown is no longer allowed. Now, how are we going to enforce that? I mean, it is enforceable if an employee reports that they, or that they saw somebody getting out of their car downtown, they can call the police and the police can ticket them, even though it's public property?
Well, that was the question I raised Thursday evening about enforcement, and the board collectively said, "Let's keep the language in the ordinance that prohibits parking in those parking lots for employees." And if it becomes an enforcement problem, then the village will, in fact, enforce it. If we, if the village repeatedly sees employees parking there, I guess, or owners parking there, and people are calling up with complaints, then there'll have to be enforcement. I don't know that...
So we can enforce this on public streets if it's an employee parking?
If an ordinance says no employee parking within certain lots, and an employee violates that, yes. And I think, you know, the normal course for something like that is perhaps try and do it through warnings first and get people accustomed that they can't park there. And if it's repeat offenders, then start issuing citations.
I guess my question is, when we had, I believe it was the residents on Willmet because of the parking of the employees of the dealerships down their street, we, they were told, "Sorry, we can't stop people from parking on public streets."
That's because there wasn't an ordinance saying no employee parking on those public streets. Here, there's an ordinance...
They weren't offered that option, or we weren't offered that option. So I'm just saying that maybe we might see Willmet people coming in now. If we intend to enforce something on a major street, then, you know, they're going to come in and say, "We want it enforced on our street. We don't want the employees parking." Because, I mean, well, it's another issue, but I can, I would expect, I'd like to look into that.
It was discussed, and one of the concerns, if I recall correctly, was you may just push that problem on Willmet to another street a block away or two blocks away. So, but you're right, that may come up.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I had a question about the enforcement date, and perhaps I missed something emailed over after the meeting, but...
'Cause I mean, well, it's another issue, but I can... I would expect... I'd like to look into that.
It was discussed, and one of the concerns, if I recall correctly, was you may just push that problem on Willmett to another street a block away or two blocks away. So... But you're right, that may come up.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I had a question about the enforcement date, and perhaps I missed something emailed over after the meeting, but we were talking about either December 1st or January 1st commencement date for this. Is there a definitive answer on that?
We can do as early as you want. We can make it work.
You know, Trustee Emery suggested December 1st, if it was possible to take advantage of the holiday season. Is that the consensus?
The only problem we might have, you know, with the fourth permit color, I don't know if we have that available yet, but we can at least get the designated parking area started, and the free part may have to come a little bit later.
And we have to order the new hanging things.
Right.
But if we don't get them in time, we could use the old ones, and then they could exchange them.
This is what we would use initially. Then we'll order new ones. And what I'm saying is, we may not have another color. I'm not aware that we do, that we could assign for the free. So that may have to wait until we get the order placed and get that new material in. But we could start this right away.
And our 10 was to go back six months and review the process.
That was discussed.
Okay. And that's still in place.
I did not put that into the body of the ordinance. I certainly can if the board wants it there, otherwise it was more a mental note, let's see how this goes.
We can do that with any ordinance, basically. Doesn't really have to be in there, does it?
Just so we don't forget, that is the intent. Okay, any other questions?
I would just suggest to the downtown businesses, maybe not wait six months, but when they have their meetings, talk about it. So if something does come up within two months, maybe they could adjust it themselves, and then we wouldn't have to in six. You know, don't wait six months. If there's a problem in two months, and the downtown businesses are seeing there's a problem, let's try to look at it and fix it.
Right. Right. And I'm sure we would be most willing to do that.
Yeah.
Yeah. Anyone else? Further comment, roll call, please.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Forsley.
Yes.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Trustee Emery.
Yes.
Trustee Clevino.
No.
Next item, downtown parking fund. Board to consider an ordinance establishing a downtown parking fund, a dedicated repository to address parking needs in the downtown B1 central business district. We have a motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
I just have one question on... We are going to... This is gonna be a working thing, where we're gonna figure out what we're putting into this fund. I mean, it's not conclusive right now.
The language now, as far as how the funds are to be expended, is that your question?
Mm-hmm.
Is to purchase property for creating new parking lots or parking structures, to expand or improve existing parking lots or structures, to establish or expand landscaping, lighting, or signage associated with parking lots or structures. Those are kind of the three main categories. And then for any other purposes, as determined by the village board of trustees, related to the maintenance expansion, establishment, or enhancement of parking in the downtown business area.
Okay, but the money that we're putting into this fund, do we have that established in there too? I mean, what I was thinking of, and I don't remember if we discussed it, is it gonna be all the parking in A, B, and metered? Is that money gonna go into this downtown parking fund, or can we not use that money for the downtown parking fund?
We cannot use the commuter parking funds because that has to be devoted to the expenditures related to the commuter parking areas that we're leasing from the Burlington Northern. So it was never our intent to include that particular portion. Now, we could include that portion in the property that we own, which is the furthest west property, but the majority of it, since we leased that property, we're expected to expend it on that property.
So we're looking at what, tickets?
Tickets that are incurred in the downtown B1 district. If the village board chooses to establish a fee for parking variance per space in the future, that money would go into the fund. Any special grants that are applied for to help expand parking in the downtown area for the village would go into the fund. And any transfers from the general fund, as may from time to time be appropriated by the village board, could go into this fund as well.
But when you say in the B1 fund, this whole Burlington parking is not in the B1, is it? All the way down to the very end, to the end of Westmont? It's just as the first block or so, isn't it? That's in our B1?
Yes, but employee parking permit fees would go into the downtown fund because these spaces would be used by downtown employees.
Or commuters who violate our parking fee that cannot go in there?
No.
So we have to know whether it's an employee that's violating it, or it's a commuter, so they don't co-mingle?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
I thought we had talked about not using the funds for any maintenance of existing.
I took that language out, so there's no general maintenance language in there, but there is the catch-all, as determined by the village board of trustees, related to a maintenance expansion, establishment, or enhancement of parking. So at this point, it's limited to the first three that I read, basically buying lots, improving existing lots, or landscaping signage, et cetera. The fourth catch-all category was only upon further approval of the board of trustees. If there were a maintenance project, and the board collectively voted, "Yes, let's apply some of that money for an important maintenance." And we can take that out, but I felt it important to at least keep it in and give the board the ability to do so if it came before you. It would not just be up to staff to say, "We're gonna stripe a lot and use the downtown parking fund for that."
I would hope it wouldn't come to that.
Yeah.
I think, though, we'd like to make sure that future boards, 'cause we... I think most of us would agree, it's gonna take a while for the fund to build up. And I think what you mentioned earlier, Trustee Scott, in the last meeting, was we don't wanna use that money, or somebody mentioned, "We don't wanna keep using that money," and it never builds up. And so we're not probably gonna be around, as trustees anyway, I hope we will be for other... But as trustees, by the time there's enough money, we don't wanna see a new board come in and misinterpret that and say, "Oh, you know, we're gonna repave that parking lot." That's not what... You know, to my mind, that's not what it's for. Now, if we bought a piece of property and we wanna put paving in that, yes.
Yeah, but that's not what that says.
I know. That's why I agree with what you're saying. We need to make sure the future board...
'Cause the future board could sit there and say, gives us number four as an option.
Yes.
We can use it for what we want.
Yes.
And that wasn't our intention...
That's not our intention, anyway.
Originally.
So we should change it. I don't know how we can clarify that.
Well, we can remove it entirely and just leave it to those first three enumerated issues, and if you wanna revisit it, revisit.
So first three... Yeah. The three would be...
Purchasing property for parking lots.
Right.
Or structures. Expanding or improving existing parking lots or structures.
See, I think...
Improving doesn't mean maintenance.
Okay.
But I think improving...
We're gonna have to...
The lot on Lincoln. We own it, but we have to improve it before we can use it.
That's right. That's true.
So...
Right. So it could be construction.
Right. And then the last one was the landscaping, lighting, signage.
Which makes sense, I think.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Just leave that point out.
I'd feel more comfortable taking that other part out.
Yeah.
Any other comments? Roll call, please.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Emery.
Yes.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Trustee Clevino.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Clevino.
Yes.
Trustee Emery.
Yes.
Trustee Clevino.
Yes.
Lions Club Candidate Program Board to consider motion approving a request from the Westmont Lions Club to solicit donations on Friday and Saturday, October 9th and 10th, 2009, for Lions candidate.
So moved. Second.
Discussion?
I would just say, be as generous as your means will allow. This is a great in-town organization that just about every penny that they raise goes right back into the community. They've done things such as the hearing van at Maze Lake. They've provided aids for sight to local residents and glasses, hearing aids, all kinds of things. So be as generous as you can and keep them safe out there in the intersections. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. And no further questions? Roll call.
Trustee Emery.
Yes.
Trustee Forsley.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Clevino.
Yes.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Trustee Clevino.
Yes.
Next item, Manning School Road Closure During School Days. Board to consider an ordinance approving a revision to the Code of Ordinances for Westmont, Illinois, Section 78-163 regarding Linden Street closures during school days.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Trustee Clevino.
Yes.
Trustee Emery.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Clevino.
Yes.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Trustee Forsley.
Yes.
Trustee Emery.
Yes.
Trustee Clevino.
Yes.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Finance ordinance number 11.
We have before us on this fifth day of October 2009, a finance ordinance in the amount of $703,059.31.
So moved. Second. Discussion? Roll call.
Trustee Emery.
Yes.
Trustee Forsley.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Clevino.
Yes.
Trustee Emery.
Yes.[1489.12]